Good evening, everyone. I, we have a little bit of change of plan today. And I know, um, you know, when things are planned, they never go as planned. There's always something that comes in. So right now, we have a brand new board member joining us today. And Vice Mayor Jesslyn Manalo will do the honor to swear him in. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you so much. Uh, it's with good pleasure to give you this oath of, um, office worth, uh, this commissioner's position, position. So repeat after me and raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Gary Pacheco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Conci- and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any m- mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, well, uh, well, first, uh, I'd like to say, um, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Mary Buenaventura, uh, for the opportunity to serve on this board here. And to, uh, Vice Mayor Justin Manalo. That's the third time now, huh? You swore me in. You know, I remember, uh, the first time she swore me in was when I was on the Personnel Board. And then she was the mayor. And then on the Planning Commission, she was a councilwoman. And now here, I'm on the Library Board. She's the Vice Mayor. Just go for four, no, just kidding. But, uh, uh, I would like to say that I look forward to working with each and every single one of you. Uh, I also would like to say, please bear with me. Um, this is very different from the Planning Commission. So, uh, give me time to adjust. And, uh, for maybe for the first few meetings, uh, I'll be quiet. Uh, which that, which means I will be observing. And once I get things rolling, then I'll really, uh, can really, you know, do my job well. So I look forward to, uh, working with each and every single one of you and, uh, all of you as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, alright, get to it.
Congratulations.
Well, welcome aboard, um, Mr. Pacheco. And I'm grateful for, um, for the opportunity to even meet you in person. I've heard about you, good things about you. I think we just browsed through each other and, you know, run into each other, but never officially.
Yes, uh, we've seen each other through events and, uh, it was just like, uh, a mere stare and a hi and bye. And, uh, so, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for those kind words, and I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to work with you too. And hopefully that you'll be able to, um, bring whatever you had there. I know you have strengths in the planning and we needed you over here too, so you'll be okay.
Thank you.
Dr. L, uh, Lex.
Well, I'd like to welcome you as well.
Thank you, Doctor.
Invite you to talk a little bit about, uh, what got you here, sort of. Did you grow up in Daly City, uh, a little bit about your history?
Oh, yes, um, I've, I've been a resident of Daly City for forty-two years. I moved here in nineteen eighty. Uh, I lived my first ten years in, uh, San Francisco. And, uh, my parents, uh, decided to move here to Daly City. And, um, from that point on, I've, uh, I've been a resident. And I've seen this, um, I've seen the city grow and progress, especially the libraries. You know, I remember as a, as a young kid, I would always go to the library. And I would always like go and, um, rent books and, uh, believe it or not, even hang out with my friends over there. And, uh, it was the old John Daly branch at Top of the Hill where I was always at. And if that was not available to me, I always went to the one on Geller Park or the one at Westlake. But I never went to the one in Bay Shore. So, um, so I've been to what, that's what, three branches now, yeah. How many, how many are there, four or five? Four, okay, I'm going three out of four, it's not bad, huh? You know? Yeah, so Dr. Bill, that's what I, uh, I've done. You know, I've been a resident here for a long time. And, uh, for me, the libraries were always like a sanctuary for me. You know, I always went there just to get away from things and I always found it to be a very peaceful place.
Well said. I'm also curious, uh, did you go to school? And I assume you went to school for part of your time in Daly City?
Uh, no, I, I did not. I mostly went, uh, my entire educational, um, years were in San Francisco.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I went to St. Charles Bote Mayo for, um, for elementary. And I went to Archbishop Burden High School in, in high school. And I went to City College of San Francisco. And, uh, there I, uh, I took ultrasound and, uh, I, and I decided not to go to a four-year college. I just decided, look, let me just take this two-year program and save myself the headache of, uh, student loans, you know? So, because I've seen the headaches on that.
So, does that mean you're in the healthcare field?
Yes, I was in the healthcare field. But, uh, I only did that just to, uh, you know, please my parents. You know, my parents were the ones that chose my career for me. You know, Justin, you're not isn't a Filipino home. Parents will always like tell you to, you know, go in, go into the medical field, and I did. But what, uh, what I did not realize that I was not very happy about. I, I did it for a couple of years, but I just, I just could not adjust. And it just wasn't for me. But, you know, so I just decided just to step away from it.
And just one last question.
Sure, go ahead.
We don't know each other. What are you doing these days in terms of, you know, your work or interests?
Well, I work at Wells Fargo, uh, in Melbrae. I work there. And, uh, other than that, that's all I do. And do this now too, so.
So we'll have two bankers on the board.
Yes, Angela and I go way back. Uh, Angela was the one who recruited me to Wells Fargo. And, uh, she was my manager for a while. And, uh, what I wanted to say, if she was here, I said, Angie, we're back together again. We're working again, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, an easy transition for me. Uh, since, you know, I have, um, always, uh, been with her, so it's, it's gonna be a good, uh, transition.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Okay, thank you, Doctor.
Okay. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody today to our Library Board of Trustees meeting today. Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Um, there's two ways for you to, um, watch this, the live telecast on YouTube. Daily City Video Meetings, um, and then to view the agenda as well. For any public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. One is submit comments by meeting day and then second, attend the meeting in person. So I'm not gonna go read everything over there. Um, just to give you the submit a comment in writing, www.dailycity.org and libraryboard@dailycity.org. Okay, so I'd like to call this meeting to order at six thirteen. Can we now stand for the Pledge of Dilegions?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have roll call, please? Present.
Vice President Lex.
Present.
And Trustee Pacheco.
Present.
Okay. Um, so now we're going to have the election of officers. And we're first gonna do the President and then second Vice President.
Uh, I would, uh, like to nominate Teresa, uh, for President for the coming term.
I was gonna nominate you.
Is there a second?
Uh, I s- second.
Sorry.
I thought you was gonna say something, sorry.
Okay, President Teresa Fabuah, myself, and then Vice President. I would like to nominate, um, Lex, Dr. Lex, to be Vice President.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
And I will also vote for, uh, Teresa as President, since we didn't call a vote for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay, maybe have approval of agenda?
Uh, I vote that we approve the agenda, uh, as presented.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, approval of minutes?
Move that the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, any public comments?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I just wanted to say thank you to the trustees. Trustee Lex, Trustee Fabuah, Trustee Pacheco, and, uh, Trustee La Carta, um, for, um, all of your service in the community. And as mentioned, um, in the past, you know, my first, um, experience in the libraries in Daly City was the Top of the Hill John Daly Library, many, many moons ago. And I will never, ever, ever forget that experience. And it was just a, a joy. And that was basically the neighborhood library for, um, me and my family and many of the neighborhood kids in what they called Old Daly City. And, um, it's just wonderful to see all the work that continues to go on. Thank you to the staff, that, um, all your work, uh, within the libraries. Because we know that the libraries are such an important hub for our community. Um, where, um, from the very young to the older, I won't say, uh, seniors, I say to the older. Um, that it's really, uh, a space and place where, um, through literacy, um, also, um, innovation of technology that's being brought forth, um, within those spaces. Um, also, uh, with the programming, uh, piece, which is so important. I, I love to see the amazing programming that's being done within the libraries. Um, and I just wanna say thank you. Yeah, I don't get it, uh, to be here very often in your trustee meetings. Um, it's just really wonderful to be in person, um, and to say thank you to each and every one of you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, now we're going to have presentation, Director's Report.
So, we have a special guest today, which I'm very excited about. Um, this is Stephanie Torres, and she's, uh, with Project Reed. And so she's here to talk, to introduce herself and to talk a little bit about what Project Reed does. I know, uh, many of you are familiar, but they do amazing work and, um, serve Daly City, Colma, Broadmoor. So Stephanie.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your kind invitation. Uh, my name is Stephanie Torres and I am the new Project Reed Coordinator for North Samat- North Samatelle County. Um, just a little bit about what our program does, in case you are unfamiliar. We provi- we provide individualized, um, tutoring to low-literate adults in the North Samatelle communities. Um, just to echo a little bit what Chayla said, um, Daly City being one of those communities, as well as Colma, San Bruno, and South City as well. Um, our goal is to help those who wish to improve their reading and writing skills. And primarily so that they can become more fully functioning members in their families and their communities. Our goal is, um, also to just reintroduce ourselves and start building that, those reconnecting those, um, relationships and, you know, helping build them and making them hopefully more steadfast. I know the pandemic was really hard on all of us. So, um, I just wanna take, thank Chayla again for this opportunity and thank the board for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Alright.
Okay, um, statewide online tutoring and homework help program?
So for that, we have our Youth Services Librarian Extraordinary, Sarah is back. By popular demand. And she's got handouts. We were having some, um, AV issues earlier and I, I heard that they have been, um, fixed, but that was late news, so we're going old school with paper.
Probably the wind.
Okay, so I wanted, I'm, um, Sarah Spence. I haven't met you, so I'm the Youth Services Librarian. Um, and I wanted to just talk about our new homework help tutoring service, um, that's free from the state library. And so, um, I was gonna do it online, or on the screen, but since we're having trouble, we're just gonna have to go through. Um, so I just wanna tell you quickly, um, some facts about, um, what it's called Brainfuse and Help Now is the, um, platform, I guess, platform. Um, so what it is, is it's free online tutoring for California K through twelve students. Um, it says K through twelve, but it's actually, there's, um, things available for adults as well. So it's not just K through twelve, but I think they're trying to promote it as a, as a free tutoring service for kids. So that's why it's, says that. Um, so what's really great about it is it's, um, real live tutoring on the computer that your, um, students and friends, adults can get help with. Um, and it's available twenty-four hours a day. There are a little, the, a few, um, restrictions. Um, twenty-four hours a day assistance is available for English, Spanish, and language arts, and math. And that's for K through twelve. So they can go on to the site anytime. Um, they can go on to a laptop, a PC, a mobile device, like any, anything, um, and get real live tutors, um, which is amazing. So they also have, which I think is really cool, they have, um, assistance from tutors that are bilingual, at least bilingual. Um, so there's tutors available in English, Spanish, Mandarin, Cantonese, Vietnamese, Tagalog. And there's also an audio, um, option. So if they want someone to actually speak to them, they can choose that. Um, for all the other subjects, um, between ten and ten every day, unless it's a holiday, which will be noted on the website, assistance is available for, um, everything else. And I'll go through, like, a little bit about everything. Well, I won't go through everything, but I'll tell you a lot that you can get. Um, so there's, um, whiteboards that, um, students or people, I don't know, users, users can use. Um, and they're not, I like it because they're not giving them the answers. They're helping them get to the answer. So, um, it's just like the, like if they had a teacher or like a real tutor, like is actually helping them get to where they need to be. Um, let's see, um, and because we have it available through the state library, um, people don't need to have a library card to get on. Um, there's geolocation, so that's really great. They can just log in whenever. Um, and then, um, we are able to get stats, um, for Daly City. So I have, I have some stats. Um, this is still a new, new program, so we, so it's not, it's not super high stats yet. Um, let's see, um, they don't need to create an account unless there's a couple, um, different things that they can access, which is like sending a question or if they need, if they wanna do help with their writing, um, those things. Because they will be getting the feedback, they'll need to create an account. Um, and I like this, that all they ask for is like a username and a password. So they're not collecting any personal information. So, um, students won't have to share any of that information with them. So, okay, so on this page is like the homepage. So this is what you can access from the library's website. I think right now we have it under the Youth Services page and E-Library, yeah. So, um, I put the, I put the link on the front, but you can just access it through our website. Um, so the first, um, column is Expert Help. And that is, um, the live tutoring. That's probably the most important or most popular, I think, um, getting that help from real tutors. They have, um, K through twelve subjects, so basic subjects like math, English, um, history, I think. Um, and then there's also college courses. So, um, that's for, um, but basic, like basic, like introduction to college. So not like any specific degrees or anything like that. Um, and then they also offer, um, tutoring for language courses. So anyone that's taking a language, um, they have tutoring for that. So that's, uh, live tutoring. And then they have a writing lab, which is really great. Um, so students can submit their writing to the tutors. This is asynchronous, so it's not gonna be live. Um, but, and they said the response time is usually within about twelve hours. That's what they say they give them. Um, but there is, um, just, it's really, it's great because they said that it, it doesn't have to be, um, like, an actual homework assignment. Like if an adult was just like maybe writing a college essay or something, like, I just need someone to look over my writing, um, they can do that. And so it doesn't have to just be homework. It could just be something that they need help with, um, and they can get that help through this. Um, and there's another, um, part called Skill Surfer, which I really like. This is kind of, um, uh, it's like additional help for, um, helping students master a concept or skill. So there's, um, videos, there's articles, there's, um, some of them allow you to get live help at that time. But things like college entrance prep tests, college application process. If people are struggling with how to get started with college, um, they have life skills, which I thought was really great. Um, you can get help about time management, financial skills, home maintenance. Like if you wanted to learn how to like patch your wall, like, there's just like so many things that I didn't even realize. Um, and they have, um, they also have some school age level help. So by elementary, middle, and high school and college level help, um, computers and technology. So if people are just wanting to find out how to use Word, like they can go on to this and get help. And like I said, there's videos and articles that they could read. And then a lot of times it gives you the option to check in with a live tutor. Um, there's ELL and there's a, actually a Parenting Corner that's in English and Spanish. And it helps parents learn about the Help Now. And it also, um, talks to them about, um, what they need to help their students, um, to be successful in school. So, there's a lot. Um, and then on the back page, there's a send question. So I was talking about that earlier. Um, if this is just, um, yeah, if you just have a question that you don't, you don't necessarily have like a lot to ask, it's just maybe one thing. Um, you can submit a question. And that's like the Writing Lab, which it's asynchronous, so you don't get a response right away. Um, and then there's the Language Lab. I said you can get help, um, with your language homework. So they have Cantonese, they have ESL, French, Mandarin, Spanish, Tagalog, and Vietnamese. So those are the main, that's the main, um, part of Help Now, those things. Um, and then there's, uh, two other sections, Study and Collaborate. Um, just giving you more, um, more help for, to helpful tools. Um, like flashcards and, uh, the e-parasuit. You can learn about your strengths and talents, if you wanna find out about a career. Um, and then there's like meeting locations, if you wanna collaborate with groups or, um, work on class projects. So I think this is really great. Um, and when you log in, it'll ask you, it asks you for your, um, like grade level. So if you, if you're in school, you put your grade level, but it goes down to college or, um, just adult, if you, if you're not in a grade. And then, um, you can specify what language you want, um, the tutoring to be in as well. And subject, sorry, subject, and then what language. So, um, I just shared this with all of our schools. Um, and I was so hap- I mean, I wasn't happy, but, um, our schools didn't have anything like this. Um, some schools do have a tutoring program like this. So I didn't know if it would, if it would be helpful, but they don't have it. So they are very excited, um, to have this for the students. Um, and typically, I think, um, mostly high school students and maybe college students might use this more than elementary school students. But there is a lot of, of help, um, for all ages. So I think it's very exciting that we have this.
And parents trying to help their, their students with, with their assignments when they might be. It might have been a while since they've been in school.
Exactly, exactly.
A little bit of extra help.
The math, I was specifically looking for my son in sixth grade. I don't understand their math, so this would be helpful, yeah. Yeah, so, um, are there any questions? Are you ready to get on Help Now, everyone?
I, I'd like to make a comment. I think this is great. You know, I could've used this when I was going to school, especially in the math, especially in math. You know, I, I was horrible in math, and this would've helped me a lot, so.
Yeah.
I like it. It's very creative.
Well, um, I was listening to the rep talking about it and she was saying that, you know, a lot- Well, um, I was listening to the rep talking about it and she was saying that, you know, a lot of students are, there's so many students in classrooms now that they feel intimidated to ask questions. And this gives them that power because it's just them and this tutor that is, and they're all like vetted and screened and background, background checked and everything. So um they're, they're good tutors, but um it gives them that chance to like be powerful by themselves.
I just wanted to express gratitude to the state library for taking the initiative to do this. You know, this, it's so much easier when something is available equitably to all, all the students, all the people that need homework help or, or just scholastic help in the state. And they, they've really kind of reached out to libraries to find out what, what was needed, what, what gaps that they could help fill. Um, so they're providing this and um they have a, another thing that's career pathways, which is like workforce development stuff that's specifically for adults. And they're just doing a lot of really new and, and really helpful things that, you know, you don't have to say, well, which city do you live in? Cause if you live here, you can have this. If not, it's, it's available to all, which is, I think, extraordinary.
So when, when you say um that they can tell how many residents, participants from Daily City that will participate, um, is there any benefit from, from it? If there is a huge amount of participant from Daily City?
It just allows us to assess if, if we're doing a good job in getting the word out. If some, if we see a big spike, we might know, well, it might just be the time of year and, and like, I don't know, midterms are coming. But it could also be that, you know, there's been some sort of specific outreach or some, some kind of, you know, online promotion that was successful. So it, it helps us do that. And, and we also then know, you know, what, um, cause it, it's not just how many people use it, but what languages we're, you know, so it gives us an insight into what people are looking for.
There's so many benefits, the fact that it's available to all these languages, the fact that it's free and it's from K to twelve. And you don't really necessarily have to be in Daily City. You can be from anywhere.
Yeah, it's available to all California libraries.
So this is, I wish it was available when I was, when my kids were in school. Um, this is wonderful. And the fact that you also share with the schools too, that's just a huge impact and show how, you know, all the dots are connected. It takes a village to raise a child. So libraries are standing up to, to even um assist them in this area. So thank you, thank you. Uh, once you sign in, is there an expired time for it to be on the?
No, it's just, um, like I said, if um the live tutoring, there is like a, it's like ten AM to ten PM for um like college and adults um for the subjects other than um English and Spanish, language arts and math. Those are twenty-four hours a day. But the other ones just between ten and ten, but it doesn't have a time limit for it. So. Could be on it for twelve hours, I guess, if you want to.
Oh, really? That, that long? You can stay on there?
I mean, you can test it out. No, I don't, they didn't say there was a time limit. I don't think there is.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Definitely spread the word. Is it gonna be, it's, it's available on our website, so they can see it?
Yeah, it is available right now.
Okay. Okay, is there any other?
Yeah, I have um any students come to the library um asking for help navigating through this yet?
Not, not that I know of, but I mean, I recently just, probably within the last month, shared it with the schools. I really thought that the schools already had something like this. Um, so I, I just was, took too long getting to them. But um, so we haven't, it hasn't been out, like the word hasn't been out that long. But um, hopefully, I think, I think a lot of people will use it. And I, I concur with my fellow trustees that this is a very helpful tool, definitely something different. Um, and very convenient. Now, um, do, if, if somebody was interested in using this, they, would they have to go on the library's website in order to access it or could we, they download the app directly? Um, you could download the app. Um, but I think um if you want stuff like saved, you would have to make an account first on like the PC and then you can get the app.
But it's, it's doing that geolocation. So um, so kind of takes away that one little impediment of having to go find your library card number and type it in. We like people to value their library card, but this is just so much more available.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So um, do you need your library card to, to punch in here or is this just straight go into, oh, okay. That's what I just wanted to make sure of. Okay.
Yeah, but um, I think because it's offered to all California libraries, they offered this geolocation, um, which just helps.
Just makes it that much easier.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So you could just log in, like you could actually just log on to Help Now, Brainfuse Help Now and wherever you are and login if you're in California.
Okay. Thank you so much, Sarah, for looking into that. On top of all other things that is on your plate, you continue to, to bring the light to Daily City into our community. So I appreciate.
She started her day greeting dozens and dozens of families coming into the library with straight time. This is the culmination of your day.
Okay. Um, is there any way we can move up, as long as it's okay with Ms. Um, do you wanna move up your, your item number so that way if you, I know that you're here, I really appreciate you. Do you wanna move up? Okay, so I motion that we move up to the um report from DCP LA um to number seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you so much for having me. It's always nice to be in here. I've been sending my directors in here for the past little while, but um thought today I would come and say, because um partly because on behalf of the board of directors, I would like to extend a warm welcome to new trustee Pacheco. We're happy to have you and we're really looking forward to working together to support our community through the Daily City Public Libraries.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So um, we have a lot of exciting events coming up, since this is the first meeting of the year. Cause I think the one last in January was canceled. Is that right? Yeah. So um, the most current thing is the tenth annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon. It'll be held on Thursday, March sixteenth. And the invitations went out to all current DCP LA members. We hope to see you all there. So if you've let your membership lapse, it's not too late. You can renew at DCPLA.org before March first and join us for this fun community event during which, along with delicious corned beef and cabbage, we'll have speakers encourage the luncheon attendees to donate toward the library's Fund the Need items. This year's speakers include Colma City Council member Helen Fisacaro, Felicia Leong from the Daily City Colma Chamber of Commerce, and Mike Wengona, newly elected trustee of the San Mateo County Community College Dist- District. We'll also get an update from city manager Tom Piccolati and one of our newest DCP LA directors, Charles Cannon of Saramonte Lexus. We'll talk about his book and why libraries are so important. So um please let me know if you'd like to come. We'd love to have you there. It's really a lot of fun. Um, on Thursday, April twenty-seventh at six thirty PM, we will hold the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate commencement event here at City Hall. We'll have performances by all of our finalists culminating in the announcement of the winner of the day, of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Daily City Youth Poet Laureate contest. We very much appreciate Daily City Public Library as our civic partner for the program and the city of Daily City for also being great supporters. So last but not least, please save the date of Saturday, September ninth for the second annual Art and Lit Fest, which will again be held at Saramonte Center. We're still in the early planning stages, but we promise it'll be just as fabulous, if not more so, as last year's event. So please mark your calendars and save that date for us. That's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Victoria. I'm glad I brought my calendar. So um, I know Ms. J Lo will be able to send us reminders for those dates ahead of time so that we all had to pencil it down our own personal. But I, I will do, I can speak for myself. I would do my best to, to be there at all those um given dates. I had a great time last year. I went to the St. Patrick and everything was, was beautiful there. And then I went to the one in ceremony to, um, I, we always appreciate DCP LA for all your contribution and for everything, for the countless and numerous donations that has contributed for the, you know, to assist or to help uh Daily City Libraries. So thank you so much, Victoria. And congratulations. I know I, we wanted to congratulate you, being a citizen. You were the citizen, you know, of Daily City. So we didn't have a meeting last, uh, last month. Congratulations for all that you do. Okay, so now we're back to trustee report. And we're gonna start from the subcommittee report for the bee project. I know Dr. Lex was on um spearheading that one and the leader for that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, I, I, I'm sorry to report that I have disappointing news regarding our urban beekeeping project. I'm glad Victoria's still here because DCP LA is part of what I'm gonna talk about. But uh, Alviol, the company that we had talked to, uh, who originated this project and uh runs it as a turnkey operation, has significantly changed both the cost and the benefit of the project to the members. In terms of costs, well, uh, and I should say these changes came about relatively late in the year. I would say in the October, November timeframe. Uh, prior to that, uh, we had a higher level of service for a lower cost. And it was based on that, that I had recommended to the board that we look into this project and we do everything in our power to bring it to Daily City and to a library site. And we made some significant progress. But let me give you the details. In terms of cost, well, structurally, Alviol offers this urban beekeeping project at four different levels of service. And we really only considered level one and level two because of the cost. And as you got into higher levels, there were some additional benefits, but not significant. So I'll only talk about tier one and two. Uh, in tier, in, uh, in terms of those two tiers, the cost has gone up between sixty-five and seventy percent, a significant amount. And now to, I'll say, uh, have a contract with Alviol for a tier one project, uh, the cost would be almost nine thousand dollars. And in the case of a tier two project, the cost would almost be thirteen thousand dollars. In addition to that, we would have two thousand dollars of expense for site improvement work. Now, in terms of the services, in the past, uh, if you were tier one, you would have one hive. And if you were in tier two, you would have two hives. Under the new contract, all tiers only have a single hive. There were educational workshops that were provided. In the case of tier one, you had two workshops. And that was true for the other three tiers as well. Now there's only one workshop in tier one. Previously, tier one included educational signage to help explain the project to people who might just discover it or, you know, uh, be looking at the bee hive and wondering why it's there, what it's doing, the purpose and so on. There's no longer any educational signage for tier one. Also, in tier one, you would receive one hundred custom designed labels under the original contract. Now you receive one hundred branded labels. And only if you go to tier two or higher, do you have the custom designed label. In the past, uh, tier one offered one hundred jars of honey from your hive that you were able to use for whatever purpose advanced the cause. Now that is still true for tier one, but in tier two, you would have two hundred. That's not true anymore. All tier levels only have one hundred bottles of honey. And so it was a great disappointment for me to find out that the cost has skyrocketed relative to our modest fundraising abilities and that the services have really dropped. I would also include a little bit of uh information about this funding we were seeking. DCP LA generously agreed to have their grant writer apply for a grant that would fund tier one services at the previous cost level. Uh, unfortunately, that grant was not funded. Uh, not a great surprise, but we had the DCP LA's enthusiastic support, which I very much appreciated, and tangible support. So thank you, Victoria. The second place we were looking for funding was through the Kimco organization that owns the Westlake Shopping Center complex. They're in the process of developing a new Burlington Coat Factory store and building a multi-use facility on the old site. And that's gonna be a multimillion dollar project. Michael Strauss, who is the key executive behind this, expressed some real interest and enthusiasm in what we were doing. Uh, unfortunately, the business climate right now in real estate is not good. And Michael reluctantly told me, uh, and sadly, I, I believe, that that funding would not be available this year, or, or excuse me, at this time. He said he thought that perhaps, and he certainly hoped, that the business climate would improve toward the end of the year and that we could revisit this. And I should add that when I applied for the funding through Michael formally, it was after I found out about the cost increase. And so the application I sent to him was for a tier two project at the new cost level. And that was, I think a round figure would be fifteen thousand dollars. That would be, you know, the cost of the project, cost of site improvements and a small amount of money, maybe a hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, or maybe two fifty, but no more than that for uh marketing and publicity activities. So at this point, I would recommend that we suspend the project until later in the year when I can go back to Michael uh and see if uh it's possible to receive funding at that higher cost level. Tier two services would get us back to about where we were at tier one before they made the changes. But if uh we're fortunate enough to have Kimco's support, uh, we could go forward with that. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, I, I, I am really deeply sorry to hear that, um, Dr. Lex. I know from the keko, you were so looking forward and working so hard. And you even have Justine planted her feet inside this and working side by side. And just to be sad to hear that, um, that you're going to suspend this and put it on the back burner for now until funds are available. And um, not to say who, who to say that, maybe there's down the line. I'm just disappointed how they raised the price.
I know. I, I, I was stunned and, and, you know, really bummed out. It took me a day just to, you know, resist getting on the phone and calling and saying, what did you guys do?
But don't give up your hopes. You may, you know, it's tiny. Who knows? It will be happening. But not, maybe not just now. But I appreciate all your patience and, and what you put into this project. But I appreciate all your patience and and what you put into this project. So the next one, subcommittee report on meeting room policy. Did we um. Were ever look in there with some minor modifications or were there any modifications that we need to do? I know Dr. Lex was the one that brought that up.
Yeah, so so um the subcommittee made some site visits.
Chela joined us.
Yes. And provide and provided some information about, um so, you know, we're library and recreation services and recreation. The recreation division does do a lot of um facilities. That's it's one of their, one of their services, so. Um I wanted to provide some information about that. They are sort of in flux with some of their their spaces, but they are, they. Because they tend to have um larger, more of event oriented spaces. And I know we were looking at smaller meeting spaces, but they do have some. And so I think they're looking into how to structure that.
Yes, uh and I wanna thank Chela and Justine Santos for going with me to visit the various sites. And well, well, I'll save Justine's comments for later, but. Because recreation uh does have space available and they do. Lease it to private groups, community groups. When they kind of sort out what's, what their changes are. And it's a clear picture of what they can provide, then I think it would be appropriate to. Either ask them to contact the Chamber of Commerce and make that information available. Or, you know, give me the information and I would be happy to go and tell the chamber that these spaces are available. If there are business meetings that people would like to conduct in Daily City. For the benefit of the community and economic development. So I appreciate Chela and the staff's time on the day when we made the visits. There are really only one or two spaces that conceivably could be used within our library system. Uh they're being used for other purposes now and I think we should fall back on recreation as our primary space provider.
Okay, thank you for that. Community engagement, library event visits.
I visited the library today. And I I'll just tell a quick story. I checked out. What are the books called? I always lose turn. It's like Lucky Lucky Day? The Lucky Day books, you know, these are are new books that are put on the shelf that you don't necessarily. Have to, uh you know, reserve online. You just have to go in and if they're there, you can pull it off and check it out. And I did. Desert Star was the name. And uh all of a sudden I started getting overdue notices. So I went into the Westlake Branch and I said, I I know I turned this book in. Well, I hadn't. Now, the staff said, don't worry about it, you know, this happens all the time. Uh it's probably under the seat of your car or whatever. So I went home and scoured everything and I couldn't find it. I do some volunteer work at the airport. And I was flying out for a Christmas vacation. On the day that I was working and I just had about finished the book. So I took it to work. I finished it. And I put it on the director's desk so that I could pick it up when I got back. And I was gone for about two weeks. And when I got back, it had totally slipped my mind. Fortunately, uh about a week ago, I saw the book on his desk. I was so relieved. But anyway, that was my uh my significant library visit. And then today I just was there to turn in some books and check out a hold.
Just to acknowledge that the um Lucky Day collection and the furniture it sits on, that was. Something that was funded with last year's Saint Patrick's Day Fund the Need um with the D C P L A.
Again, thank you, D C P L A.
Thank you. And so um for um trustee Pacheco, so we have these. Um library visits. And I I believe I heard you, you mentioned that you haven't been to Bay Shore Library.
Yeah, and uh I'd like to uh make a visit there. And so I'm familiar with, uh so I'm familiar with it. Cause I I'll be honest with you, I don't know where it is in Bay Shore.
Yeah, it's so, yeah, so it's really easy. It's on top of the, it it's a really good scenery. If you're outside, you overlook the Cow Palace, the pretty much half of the bay. But it's on top of um Martin's. Yeah, Martin and Rio Verde.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. I I passed by that. And okay, I take that. But I was with, I remember I was with uh Ray Buena Ventura and Justin Manalo that time and uh. I just saw it from the exterior. So that's what you're talking about.
So there's the the community center used to be Boys and Girls Club. And on top of that is the library. Which is, I don't know, who was the smartest one to put it on top there? Because it kills me when I walk on top of it. Yeah, so those are the visits, like each of us will take a library to to go visit.
Do we do that? Like, how often do, can we do that?
You can do it as much as you want to. So by the time we come back for our next meeting, then we check in and report in of. How your visit was.
Do I arrange that with you or you man and chair or?
I'd love to to find a time that works for you and um you can meet the 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 staff out there, the librarian.
Okay, sure. I'll be my first one. Then your library, okay?
I wanna say I'm very bad in checking out books from the library now since my kids are grown. And since they have all this technology of reading online. And you know, it's still missing the fun part of going there and check out the book, you know. So um.
Uh may I ask a question about that? Uh okay, so now we are, we have hit this uh this time where everything is digital. What? Okay, what is the percentage of stu- of of, okay, let's just say, people in the community still borrow books? Is it? Is it still up? Is it way down or is it?
Oh, no, we we um we have a lot of people in our community that that enjoy printed materials. I think especially um when you're checking out picture books or, you know, something to to use as a family that that people that definitely still enjoy a printed book. That's definitely most of what we check out, but we we've seen consistently. The um the use of of our ebooks and e-audio books and e-magazines and e-comic books. Increasing. Um so I I don't have the stats with me right now, but but that's something, you know, that we run every year. We look at that. At trends. And I know um I was gonna talk a little bit, I think, for the announcement, just something about Overdrive. And that's our main ebook platform. And I know uh it's it's something that we do as part of our consortium, so it's uh. All of the P L S libraries. And I think this is the second year in a row we topped a million checkout. So it's definitely, you know, it's something. Once people discover it, they, you know, many of them become super users and 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 it's just, it's just very convenient. I I think, I mean, they both, you know, bring different things to the experience of reading. There's definitely a lot of convenience with the e-materials and that's something we put, you know, a little bit more of our resources into each each year, but. Still very popular.
Because, see, the way I look at libraries now, uh and this is just from observation from from past years. Is that I, my my thought was, was that it has become more of a. Place where people use desktops now. You know, so you know, uh that's where I've noticed. It's like when the library road open. There was the line right there to to use the desktops and no one really went to the books. So I was thinking the libraries have become more of of uh, you know. Supplying, you know, those kinds of materials to households because, you know, face it, let's. Many households in the community do not have access to internet, don't have desktops, don't have printers. So where do they go? They go to the library. And that's what my thought was with libraries now, that they have become more of uh. Using desktops and uh in and many people using them for research or doing homework or or just for the fun of it. You know, watching YouTube.
That's definitely true.
That was my observation of that.
But they actually now, um I mean, there's definitely those those super users of 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 our, what we call our computer labs. But now they can also check out a Chromebook or check out a a Wi-Fi hotspot. So it's kind of that combination of being able to check something out and it is the internet. And take home.
Okay, okay. All right, well, yeah, thank you for that, cause that's so, that's what I have observed with libraries now, is that they have become more of, you know, using desktops.
The power walk to the.
And I've seen many fights in there too. That's my spot. No, that's my spot.
Yeah, I think that that's that's declined a little bit since the pandemic because. I think, um, you know, we were closed for a period of time and and I know, oh, some of our our super users. Bought a bought a computer.
So how is that now that now that the pandemic is somewhat winding down? Uh is the library hours, are they back to normal? And, okay, so, okay, that's what I just wanted to know.
We're we're offering for full services and it's, you know, we're, I think we're still in the process, but definitely, um. I've I've seen just anecdotally, just seen the busyness really starting to pick up again. Cause you know, it interrupts people's momentum and and their normal flow of life. And so we're happy they're coming back. There's.
Okay, that's good.
Bunches and bunches of families this morning for story time. It's a it's a busy day, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, um. I've been to Bay Shore, oh Bay Shore Library, and it's just low of patrons, you know. But um I know that this is tax time, it's tax season, so I believe people will. Also because we offer those services of scanning and do we still have those, Chela?
So um we, well, we we have tax forms, but we've been sent by the IRS and the Franchise Tax Board. And I think I think we might be the last ones that where you can come in and get a a a tax booklet and a tax form. We have all the basic forms. And um and definitely people do, um I know, I know I actually assisted somebody the other day when I was upstairs. Trying to log in and print their W twos. So, you know, bridge that gap for people that don't have a printer at home. We, I think we've talked about this a couple of times. We had um received some ARPA funding. For uh what we call library document stations that were in the process of installing there. Having some stubborn little kinks in the in the technology, but. Staff are diligently working through it. Um but basically, it's a, you know, we, it's a scanner, a high-speed scanner for multiple pages and a flatbed scanner. You can scan it, send it to your phone, send it to your email, send it to your, you know, your um Google Drive, that sort of thing. So. That's something that we found that that members of the community really appreciate that we offer. It's not one of the core library services. But it's something you can't get anywhere else, so.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Are there anybody else? Any? Anybody else report library event visit? If not, then we're moving up to teen progra- programming ideas.
I'll give an idea. Um so um Bank of America does um a project called Better Money Habits and. I did a video for um when we were in the pandemic and um we had, was it Teen Tuesdays or Teen Thursdays? Just teaching, um you know, kids about what a checking is, what a savings is, what credit is. And so I think it'd be kind of, and I'm certified to do that with the bank. Um and I'm I'm thinking of doing it bef- and really embarrassing my daughter on for in eighth grade and doing it for all of the eighth graders. Because I I have done it before with um Ben Franklin. But I think it'd be kind of cool to do something like this for the libraries. You know, um let me pull up this site. And you know, it's it's us really. They create these materials, they give it to us. We answer the questions with what we know via banking. But it's basically a personal financial education, better money habits. So there's um. There is a presentation about credit. There's a presentation about saving and budgeting, homeownership. Debt, life priorities, um and steps for money management. I I would even, we could even do fraud, right? There's there's different things that I think would be great. The, this is like a great idea for teens. So I'd love to collaborate and do that.
Yeah, um are you thinking of um just like one or maybe like a series?
I would love to do a series, but I, let's start with one. Shaila's been to my bank, it's so busy. Um but yeah, we we could definitely, I could coordinate with the trustees. Maybe you all read the material and. Yeah, so, you know, we can, we can uh work on that. Um. I could bring folks in too. That would be an idea that we could definitely do.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Um we've done something before about like the um the job, job now.
We did have a, yeah, a teen specifically for teens. And I know we've, we've done like a, like a money smarts kind of a thing that was not specifically for teens, so this would be cool.
Yeah, it would be, I would be totally interested in working with you.
Things you don't wanna learn the hard way.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you, Angela. At this point, I really don't know what's going on with these teens. I I I seen, I've always admired um. Victoria when she posted her her daughter's. A milestone. I always like, look at that, you know? And it will be so if the world was like, all the teens were good. You know, because nobody was born bad, these children. It's just that they're going through so much stuff right now. You know, with the pandemic, trying to survive, seeing parents, getting up in the morning. Going to work and don't see them until the next morning. And they're taking upon responsibilities that they're not supposed to. They step up and be the parent when some parents are working night shifts in graveyards. You know, it's similar to what Angela doing, but I like to have fun. To teach them about money, yes, abs- absolutely. But I wanted to do like a assembly of teens. You know, of all cultures. Yes, like um, yes. Tell it. Yeah, like a talent show. Talent show or a fashion show for teens.
That's a good idea. A fashion show because that's what a lot of teens are doing.
In their own ideas. That's just a big dream of mine, like to do that. Dr. Lex?
I don't have anything to add, but, you know, I'd suggest that maybe one or two of us uh get together and. Come back at the next meeting with the presentation of something tangible. You know, rather than just sort of doing a little brainstorming from the the chairs here. And then, you know, we'll have something specific to support or comment on.
Thank you. Okay. Then we already finished that. The announcements and communications. The inaugural celebration of the new San Mateo County poet laureate. O'Hair Tellt, please forgive me for butchering the name, Agüeta. On February twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
So I have, I have flyers. I put this on the agenda because I absolutely didn't want to forget. So, yeah, I'm absolutely excited that the the new San Mateo County poet laureate is a Daly City resident. He's a regular visitor at the at the John Daly Library, and that's where his inaugural event will be. So I've got some flyers here. It is this Thursday, this Thursday at five thirty. There's gonna be food, there's, it's gonna be fun. So if if anyone can make it, please do come out. I know that it, there's some other events going on at that same time, but I will, I'll hand these out at the end.
Where is it gonna be at?
It's gonna be at the John Daly Library.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the reciprocal borrowing agreement with MarinNet and NorthNet for Overdrive eBooks?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit earlier about our e-resources that we have. And this is kind of one of those sort of quiet changes, really positive thing, I think. That PLS did as a group, the, there's a, there's a group of librarians from, with representation from all of the member libraries that kind of manages our consorcial collection. And they have entered into a reciprocal borrowing agreement. So this is an agreement with MarinNet and NorthNet. And so NorthNet is actually a, it's a group of groups. It's the Mountain Valley Library System, the North Bay Cooperative Library System, and the North State Cooperative Library System. So it's just serving vast swaths, swaths of the north of the state. And then Marin, MarinNet is a consortium that includes Belvedere Tiburon Library, College of Marin, Dominican University, Larkspur Public Library, Marin County Free Library, Mill Valley Public Library, San Anselmo, San Rafael, and Sausalito Public Libraries. And so all of these libraries have their own, they also work with the same company, Overdrive, and they have their own collection. And PLS has a beautiful collection. And so what we've said is that we're gonna go ahead and share that collection. So you, and it's done in a way that's fairly seamless. You can actually go in and and if you use the Libby app to access your Overdrive materials, you can add, if, you know, I know some of, some of us have a library card from maybe more than one library. You can add those other library cards in. And what you can do is you can add both MarinNet and NorthNet, but then put in your Daly City library card or your, wherever your your PLS library card is. And you'll just be able to seamlessly switch over if you, if you're reading this great series of mysteries and for some unknown reason we don't have a copy of Book Five. You can check and and easily see if they have it in one of these other libraries. It's a, it's a great agreement because there's no holds allowed. And so it's not gonna, their users are not gonna be impinging on like our high-demand items and vice versa. But things that might be just sitting on a virtual shelf somewhere have have that opportunity to to serve as they were meant to serve and be read. So I'm, I'm really excited about that. It really opens up, it's, it like adds like eighty-four thousand titles to our collection. So we're building our collection. We have, we have, in addition to PLS and the Overdrive collection, Daly City also has its own local collection where we put in things that that our patrons here in Daly City are waiting on. And if there's a long waitlist, we'll add extra copies. So we're trying to make sure that people are able to get in a reasonable length of time, things that they're looking for in in that collection. I'm excited about that. Innovation, cooperation.
Thank you. Thank you, Jayla. Okay, agenda building for next meeting. So I have your budget printout. If we can have, we can, I think we are due for that, if it's ready.
The Sears budget and how how we are spending?
Yes.
Okay, so the the fiscal
Yeah.
Twenty-three budget.
And then the other one is the library trustee meet and greet with patrons. So if you can sit, send over some dates and then we'll we'll decide. And so Pacheco, so meet and greet. So when I came on board, it was having coffee with the patrons. So we pick a location, whether it's Daly City or Westlake. And we all meet there. And it just, you know, greet the patrons and introduce ourselves to some of the patrons, the staff, and just to put our face out there to the community, who we are.
So they know who we are.
Yes.
For purposes of the community, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So she will send us some dates and then we all decide, oh, what, what location is better for us. And then the teen programming, I wanted to to put that again back on the agenda. So by next, our next board meeting, I challenge all of us to bring your ideas. And to see, you know, no idea is bad idea. But just bring your ideas to see what we can do. I really need to do something with our teens.
Oh, did you say teens?
Teens.
Okay.
And then Jayla, if you can, please, 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 I'm really bad in dates. So if you can send us all the, the collection of all the dates and their reminders to all of us so that we can put it in our personal calendars for upcoming events. Anybody else have anything for the agenda for next, next board meeting?
Not for the agenda, but I did want to make a couple of comments before we adjourn.
Yes. Okay, so before I turn the time over to Dr. Lex, I wanted to take this opportunity, take this time myself to thank Justine Santos. If you're listening and if you have a chance to listen to this, I wanted to express my sincere things. And grateful to know you as a colleague and as a friend and as a community member who is always available and be able to learn and to teach me and not only that, to share her ideas, her wit, her experiences to further the work. I know that you are moving, you know, across the bay. Hopefully, wherever you're moved to, they'll open up other doors. And then the city of Vallejo will, there you go, I said it, the city of Vallejo will take you in as a commissioner, as a trustee. And to share with them the knowledge and all the good experiences that you have. So wishing you all the luck and the best wishes out there. And don't be a stranger. You're always welcome here in the city of Daly City. Good luck. Dr. Lex?
Thank you. And I also wanted to recognize Justine's service to the board. I first met Justine at a DCPLA book sale event where the volunteers were helping to organize books. And Justine was there. And I was immediately impressed by all of the qualities that you've mentioned. But also she just brings a multifaceted perspective. And what I really appreciated was her sense of social justice and how libraries play a role in that. And what could we do? How can we extend that in ways? So I'm terribly sorry she's leaving. It's completely understandable. And I too wish her nothing but the best. But Justine, you will be missed. And thank you for your service. I also want to just put in a plug for the St. Patrick's Day lunch, if anybody can make it. I have signed up. So I hope to see some of the rest of my colleagues there. And Victoria mentioned membership. Every member of the Library Board of Trustees serves because we believe in libraries and we support libraries. And another way we can do that is by being members of DCPLA. So if by any chance your membership has lapsed, and Victoria will be happy to tell you if that's the case. Or if you've never been a member, please, please do join the organization. They're very worthy of support because they do everything to help us. And the last thing I want to mention, real quick, is that I found the suggestion form at the Westlake Branch. And I thought it was a really good idea. And, you know, I was kind of curious, and you don't have to respond now. This could even be an agenda item for next time if you wish, but are these being used? And if so, what kinds of suggestions are we getting?
Random comments for the most part.
Is anybody else?
Would we benefit from having all of those, like a box of suggestions and then filtering it out and then maybe bringing it to the meeting?
Sure, I can, I can open it up. It's often kids just are attracted, I think, to the box and they just, I mean, sometimes I love my library, nice, sweet things, but it's usually just sort of random.
Maybe, so maybe the, you know, our, our face-to-face check-ins will be more valuable.
Right. Before we close, I also wanted to extend my sincere thanks to all the staff. You know, Jayla, to you and your staff, kudos to all that you guys have done since we came back and opened from the COVID. I know it's not easy, but I've seen the fruit of the work. I've seen Sarah come to my organization and, and the children, they just loved her, you know. And bringing that transition of enjoying literacy from a very young age. You know, and they'll always remember this lady that comes from the library, you know. We're in a country that we're so fortunate, you know, comparing to other countries or other part of the world that children never get to have a book. I grew up, the only books that was in my house was the Bible and the phone book. You know, and that's why I love reading. So thank you, staff. Thank you for everything that you have guys have done. So now the meeting is going to adjourn at seven twenty-four. Have a good week, everybody.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
All right. This was a good meeting. I was, I was, I was wondering how.